I would like to call this meeting of Somerset Berkeley Regional High School School Committee's order at 6:31. Do notice having been posted. Pursued to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present. Roll call of members present. Mrs. Gagliardi.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Gillicuddy.
Here.
Mrs. Field.
Yeah.
Mr. Machado.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
And the chair is also present. Also with us this evening is Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover; the Director of Curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haskell; the Director of Special Education, Ms. Megan Ashton. And thank you so much for attending. This is your first meeting.
Yeah.
And our Recording Secretary, Robert McCarver. Very own key stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Marby, could we remain standard for a moment aside before the events that happened eighteen years ago with 9/11? Possible. A moment aside, please. The next item is the meeting date for our next meeting is scheduled as Wednesday, October 16th. If I could just poll the committee real quickly. I believe a few of us are traveling on that date, and generally speaking, we have our meetings on Thursdays. So I just wanted to see if anyone had a conflict for Thursday, the 17th, as opposed to Wednesday, the 16th.
Is there a reason why we schedule it on Wednesday?
Not that I recall. Is that music ball?
Oh, maybe that's it. Roman, does that ring a bell?
It might be parent-teacher conferences.
Parent-teacher conferences at the high school are the 24th and 30th.
So it's not the ball related?
Nothing Music Town related that.
Okay.
If I can, let me just check the Somerset Public Schools. Thursday, the 17th are Somerset Middle School parent-teacher conferences. I'm not sure if that's why.
I would say let's move it, and then if I run a little late, I can always attend. If there's any items on the agenda that I would like to be present, I'll ask you to question it for me. I'm fine with that. Perfect. Alright, so if the committee is comfortable with it, we'll change the meeting date from Wednesday, the 16th to Thursday, the 17th. So the next regularly scheduled meeting is Thursday, October 17th at 6:30 PM at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. First section of our agenda is student achievement, teaching, and learning. We're going to defer the first item momentarily and move on to the second one, which is show choir competition trip proposal.
Wonderful. Hello.
Sam.
Most of you know me, but Sam Bianco, the Director of the Show Choir here at Somerset Berkeley. I do have handouts in case you didn't receive a digital copy, if anybody would like one, just of the proposal I have. Everybody good?
Is this it?
Yes, that's it.
Do our homework.
Awesome. So I am proposing to take the show choir on their first out-of-state competition trip, much as the band does every year, to Newport News, Virginia. It's just north of Virginia Beach. It would be during February break, so there would be no missing school. It would be funded both by students and by Friends of Music fundraising, in order to help lower the costs for the students. We would be going down on, I believe it's on a Thursday. Nope.
Wednesday.
Yes, no, we load on the Wednesday, we leave on the Thursday. And we'd be heading down early because the choir down there has agreed, if we are able to travel to them, to do a full day of workshops and exchanges with us, where I work with their choir, their director works with our choir, the kids get to meet each other, they get to perform for each other, teach each other their shows that they've been working on, and then the next day they get to perform in competition with one another at the actual show. It adds the extra educational element of having workshops and clinics and professionals coming to work with the kids, while still giving them the social aspect that they'll enjoy.
If I may ask you one last question.
Yes, of course.
The date at the top here says February 21st to 24th, but it looks as though it's the 20th to the 23rd. The 24th is a Monday.
It is. Whatever one we come home on the Sunday, I must have paid a error on the date there. We'd be coming home on the 23rd, the Sunday, did we remember?
So it's Thursday, the 20th to Sunday, the 23rd?
Yes, yes. But that way we wouldn't miss any school, that was the point of scheduling it that day. In terms of chaperones, if you look at the very last page, in order for this trip to work numbers-wise and financially, I have to hit a certain number of people on the buses to keep the price low. The ideal number is 84 to 104. On that, and if I wanted to take all three groups, if I had a lot of interest, I could take 126 to 156. But I'm looking to keep a chaperone to student ratio of 1 to 5, which I have spoken with Mr. Lenzinski, and he has approved that he's okay with that number. The only other thing that I wanted to point out was that I have been in contact with a couple of different organizations about helping subsidize students who might not be able to pay for the trip if they wanted to go, because it's not mandatory, it's not really optional. But if a student really wanted to go but couldn't afford to, the Friends of Music is raising a bunch of money, we do a bunch of our own fundraisers that we could use some of that money towards helping to subsidize, and I've been in contact with the new Somerset Educational Foundation that's running the 5K about the possibility of applying for a grant for scholarships for kids to be able to afford to attend the trip.
I assume, because you're part of a fine-performing arts department, there'll be all the precursory waivers and nursing, nurse forms and all of that. I know you've done that.
Yep. We have medical forms for the season already, so all the kids have already turned those in. We would probably do an additional one with medication forms for the trip. I would use all the same forms and all the same procedures as the Disney trip.
Okay.
Because he does a good job, so I reinvent the wheel.
Absolutely. So the rate per person, the ones that you have on the first page, those are essentially based on the lower number right now, correct? Would that drop if you went to the larger group or is that more?
No, that is the number for 42 paying participants per bus.
Ah, I see.
But that number is worst-case scenario.
Okay.
That number factors in no fundraising, no help from anybody, and factors in the extra cost of transportation for the trailer and the equipment, factors in all those other things. But that should come down as we go. Plus, you get a free trip for every 20 paying participants, so the more I take, I would be able to eliminate some off of the kids' assessments. Once the three or four, depending on the staff members, get their trips, then the rest will be divided evenly among all the student participants.
And have you put out this at all to the show choir participants in terms of?
Just precursory saying, would you be interested if we were to do something along these lines? Are you free during February break? You know, is this something that I have interest in? And the result was overwhelmingly positive, so I brought it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Sam, in all the years Show Choir's been in existence, it's about 10, 15 years?
About, yeah.
They've never run out of state to perform?
Not that I know of. They have not in eight years I've been here. I'm not sure if Michael ever took them out. Nope, this is the first.
Massachusetts, Connecticut.
Yeah, we've only been in Connecticut in seasons, but it's in New England circuit, this'll be the first time outside of that.
Mr. Bianco, can you talk a little bit about the numbers that you see, the participation rate for show choir this year as opposed to past years?
Sure. This year, we're working with 80 students currently, plus another 10 in the pit. 10 in the pit, and then I had a tech crew of, depending on the day, three to five kids. There's three that are always there, and other few that show up to help when they can. So what is that, 95-ish students? We have a staff of three, and then an unpaid volunteer, so a staff of four. And usually, we're about 100 participants in the program, and we're at about 100 again this year. It's been about four years now at that number. But they've reached the level where they know how to perform and they know how to practice, and I think I can take them outside of the groups that already know them, and we can, you know, do a great job.
What's the name of this competition?
This is the Menchville Clash of Choirs in Menchville, Virginia. They all have fancy names.
Jim, I just want to remind you, when Mr. Marshall made his presentation, the Ethics Commission has certain requirements if any employees of the district are going free of charge or essentially out of the tuition or the fees that are paid by the students. So you need just, if you don't already have a copy of those guidelines, you should make sure you comply with that filing at the beginning and filing at the end.
Okay. They're in the, this is.
I'll be asking at the end of the year about compliance, so.
Yep, we have the PDF of that, I will review it.
So I'm assuming that the travel insurance that we're purchasing will cover 100% of any losses, given that this is a February trip? February bus trip is a little bit tenuous, so.
Yes, and the travel insurance was optional. I'm not making it optional. Everyone's getting the travel insurance, just in case of a snowstorm.
Yeah.
Yes.
The weather gods have been reasonably kind the last couple of years, so.
Yeah.
Can you want to speak to, on her notes, it says all rates based on tariffs in effect in June? What tariffs will impact the trip?
I do not know what that is referring to. This is the packet directly from the travel agent, this first page, the second through the last page are my typed notes of my plan.
So this is if we decide to go to Menchville, Austria?
I think that's a travel agent jar.
Yeah, it's a travel agent jar.
How much the bus costs.
It's usually if fuel rates and things like that, if they drastically change.
And this is the same travel agent and the exact same person, not just agency, that does the band trips every year. So we've worked with them before.
So you said the trip is optional, but works best if you have 90% of your performers participate.
Correct. If we don't have enough kids sign up to go, then I would have to scuttle the trip for this year and try again in the future, maybe modifying the plan. Once, it's sort of like, you know, the marching band. If I went to a competition with a marching band and, you know, the seven kids in the center were missing, then suddenly there's a big hole, and it doesn't make any sense, and you score poorly, and so we need enough people to be able to cover what we need to make happen to make our show function. Otherwise, we wouldn't be a successful performance, and I don't want the kids' first trip out to be not successful, so.
Did you say a chaperone for every five students?
That is the goal, and that's what I discussed with Mr. Lenzinski.
So if you had 90 students going, you'd have 18 chaperones?
That's the goal, yep.
You feel comfortable with that?
He does have quite a few that go to the regular competitions throughout New England, so I think that's a reasonable goal.
Yeah, we travel with 90 or so kids and 10 or 11 chaperones at regular events, plus our staff, which is another four or five. So I'm hopeful and confident that we can do that also for the trip.
Any other questions or comments? Come to me on.
I think it's a great thing for the kids, because you'd be excited.
I'm going to motion that we approve the proposed show choir competition trip to the Menchville Clash of Choirs in February 2020.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Item number three under our agenda this evening is beginning of school year update. Mr. Schoonover?
Thank you. I just wanted to share with the school committee a quick update on the enrollment as we start the school year. As of today, we have 1,029 students in the school. The class sizes are fairly uniform. We have 250 freshmen, 261 sophomores, 246 in the junior class, and 268 seniors, with four students in our 18 to 22 program.
How many? I'm sorry.
Eighteen to 22, four. So 1,029, as I said, altogether. That's actually a little bit less than where we were last year at this time. We started, we were right around 1,050 students at the beginning of last year, and that number does tend to drop a little bit during the year, but that's where we are right now. I did ask Mr. Lenzinski if there's anything he wanted me to share specifically about the start of the school year, and he wanted me to emphasize what they're calling a kindness, kindness card initiative, where random acts of kindness are being acknowledged with a card that's passed from, I think it's starting out with all staff, when they see students just making a random act of kindness to another student. A teacher shares a card to that person, and then that person can then give the card to someone else when they see a random act of kindness. So they are spreading these along, and then they will be placed, I believe there's going to be some bulletin board where they can put up these random acts of kindness boards.
I happen to have one for your Mr. Schoonover, if you'd like to, if they'd like to take a look at it, with a pass-it-on, and there's a little initial that goes on it, and then you would pass it along to somebody that you witnessed exhibiting a random act of kindness.
Liz, can I go get you supper tomorrow?
Hold on to that.
Now, have you received that from someone or?
I did. I did. I don't want to brag, but yes. Mr. Lenzinski actually shared that with me, and he did tell me to pass it along, and I will. Just haven't gotten there yet. So I will initial and I'll pass it along, and so it sounds actually really exciting.
I got excited because my initials are on the back, but I then realized that.
Oh.
Anything else to record?
No, that's all for now.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, how's the schedule, the new schedule?
It seems to be going well. We had, the high school had a few more students in studies at the beginning of the year than they were originally anticipating, although it's, we have far fewer students in studies than what we've had in the past. But with going from an eight-period schedule to a seven-period schedule, there are some electives that are a bit tight right now. We are really maximizing our class sizes throughout the district. We're not going over caps, but we are, I would say we have an average class size that's higher than what we've normally had. And again, that's going from a period eight, an eight-period schedule to a seven. But at this time of the year, over the first two weeks, there are, I know Mr. Lenzinski has received several requests from people looking to transfer out of a class that they signed up for, and they're looking to get into another course. Now, those courses tend to be full, and, you know, so, but those are problems that typically happen every, every year in September during the first few weeks. But overall, the schedule is going well. The longer blocks on Tuesdays and Thursdays have been well-received, from what I understand. I personally have, I have two children who come home every night, and I get to ask them how the schedules are, and I've heard nothing but positive comments from them about the sizes of the classes, particularly those on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, so far, it's all relatively good.
And when, when Mr. Lenzinski was here, I think at our last meeting, he mentioned the fact that under the new schedule, teachers have significantly less duty periods, and I had anticipated the possibility that we might be asked to address that situation with non-teaching personnel. The need for that hasn't arisen?
Not yet. No, and when you said teachers have fewer duties, they have no duties at this point. We have, this room, the library, has become the main place for studies, when kids do have them, rather than having a number of them occurring around the building at the same time. So that is, reducing the need for study halls really brings down the need for duties, but we don't have anyone in the hallways as we've had in the past during some of the periods.
Does that mean we have no supervision at all outside of restrooms?
There's, there's been limited supervision outside of restrooms in the past. Duty, hall duty was always the last one to be filled. We needed them, we needed our supervision in classrooms with students rather than the hallways. But when we do have, we do have several building subs here, and for periods when they are not assigned, Mr. Lenzinski is assigning them to the hallways, to the supervision outside of bathrooms and in the halls. But it's not happening every period of the day.
I read in The Spectator that we were no longer pursuing a certain type of vaping monitor in the restrooms and that other possibilities were being considered. Do you think at our next meeting, you could tell us a little more detail about that situation?
Yeah, we, I mean, I, right now, we don't have another option. We are going to look for others, but I believe I updated the committee last year on this, and the ones that we tried out during, I can't remember if it was Forever or Equal Vacation, just, it was not a device that was working well, so we will continue to look for options. There, it's still relatively new, it's a new technology, and we're, we're looking for one that works.
My question on the rate of block time, the 80-something minutes here, what kind of subjects are the electives, like is there civics in any of those, or financial literacy? What type of interests are in those classes that students choose to, you know, take?
The, the main goal for those blocks is to give students supports, academic supports. But not every student will need that every week. So the enrichment, teachers will offer something that is, you know, whether it's a hobby of theirs that they would like to share, or an expertise in some way, they will offer up some of these options for students to go into. We, actually, Ms. Haskell and I met with a group last week where we're looking to possibly bring in, we want some options for students in terms of exactly what you just said, financial literacy, civics, things like that, more online programs. So we're going to have, we have another meeting scheduled, I believe, next week, a week from today, where we learn more about that and see how we can incorporate that in.
And when they see that list, they'll be able to sign up ahead of us?
Yeah, they'll sign up the week before for the following Thursday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? Next item on the agenda, I'm assuming we're continuing to defer the first item.
No, we're ready for it.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is Somerset Berkeley Education Foundation. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. We're very excited to, we have a small little presentation as well, a little PowerPoint, but we're very excited. Most of you have probably read about it already in the newspaper. Special thanks to The Spectator and Mr. Austin for covering this at great length. But this is an endeavor that has been talked about for many years in our community. I know everybody that was on the building committee, we had this discussion about funds that we were getting for the going-away potty, so to speak, of the old high school, and Raiders Remember, it was a nonprofit, was created, and it was talked about whether that should be a nonprofit for scholarships or a foundation for the schools. Decided to go with the scholarship route. It was brought up once again. Mr. Schoonover, during his interview process, talked about foundations, that it's a, an added piece to what the great things that we're doing here in the school districts, Somerset, Berkeley, and the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District. So over the past year, a bunch of individuals, Sharon, you know, was one of them leading the charge, you know, with Mrs. Gagliardi, Mrs. Field, Mr. Schoonover, I think pretty much all of you here, if I, we're helping lead this charge to create this foundation. This is a nonprofit that will benefit the Somerset School District, the Berkeley School District, and the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District. It's a foundation that will, you know, based, you know, on innovative, different creative ways to spark what has already happened. You know, there's many a times, we were in front of the Somerset K8, and we talked about how the teachers and administration staff during the fall months, they'll go to trainings, you know, different seminars, and learn about these great new things that are going on throughout the region, throughout the state, throughout the country. You know, as a school committee member, though, you are fixed to a budget that was created a year prior. So to hit those initiatives, to enhance those initiatives, to, you know, have that creative, innovative things, you know, Mrs. Haskell probably has 100 of them in her head right now, she could probably give the list through. It's tough as a school committee member to then say, we can budget for that, because the budget's already been created. You know, so this foundation is a way to enhance and to enrich, you know, the ideas, the great things that are going on in our school districts. So our mission is there, yep. I'm not a person who likes to read verbatim, you know, you can read through it, but this is, you know, like I said, this is all three communities. So this is something that has been thought about for a length of time, and it's been put together, you know, with, with great thought. The fundraising, you know, we were definitely going to be hitting up the businesses, we're looking for the big donations, but we will also take the small donations. We'll even take the volunteering. That is always a big thing as well. So our board, so the board is made up of myself, I am the president, you have the Vice President, Sharon, we have the first Vice President, Kathleen, the Treasurer, Ian, Secretary, Ian, who is here, and of course Sharon is here as well, two other trustees, the Treasurer and Heather, and the ex-officio members are both Superintendent Schoonover and Superintendent Lynch, that, you know, we have met with both of them. The reason why those are the ex-officio members is to keep with what is going on for the goals that you have created over a one-year, three-year, five-year period. So when the grants are submitted, they will be part of the process to make sure that, one, we're not supplanting, as, you know, we hear that a lot, especially in government, we're not supplanting the budget, we're enhancing, or we're sparking, or there's an initiative that you as a committee or the administration has talked about to then spark that. And then to make sure that over the years, if it's equipment or certain things that are going to be supplied through that grant process, then it can, you know, be ongoing. You know, our vision, kind of what I was just saying, I mean, it's, you know, to enrich and bring that curriculum alive, and the great work that our educators are doing, it's to enhance that, to spark it. We have a Facebook page, we have our, and as of today, we have our website up, so it's SomersetBerkeleyEducationFoundation.org. Pretty simple. It's the name of the organization. It's very long, we're trying to think, and we might have a couple, you know, a couple of contests and stuff to maybe kind of shorten it, like, you know, you know, Great Kids or something, dot com, I don't know, but we will, we will figure out a way to shorten that up, but.
It's long, and it's good.
It's long, but it's good, it's very.
At that point.
At that point. Yep. So, you know, who we are, you know, we're made up of the residents, community members, you know, here in Somerset and in Berkeley. You know, there is some bylaws that have been created. You know, we do not have any elected officials part of our bylaws, so if you are an elected member of one of these committees, you know, you can definitely volunteer, you can definitely donate. you can definitely donate, we would love your donations. But to be a board trustee, we are trying to keep it separated. You know, and we've looked at all the other foundations and, you know, talking to Mr. Schoonover, talking to Mr. Lynch, they are, you know, not speaking for them, but they are very happy and waiting for this to happen. As Mr. Lynch, when I talked to him the other day, his brother, it seems like his whole family is, you know, superintendents, but his brother just retired and said, you know, embrace it. This is something that you're gonna love because where he came from, they had an extremely strong foundation and said, it just only helps. It's kind of the, you know, you know, whipped cream, the gravy, kind of on the turkey, you know, strawberry, whatever, you know, cherries on top kind of deal. We are a registered nonprofit, so this is great for organizations, for community banks, for, you know, community investment, to then give back to the community. Our goals and our launch, so we are launching very, very fast. Our goal is right off the bat to hit ten thousand dollars within the next month to raise. We are gonna be hitting the spirit of Somerset. We are working with Berkeley on a couple of different community events that they are doing. And our first fundraiser is the five K road race here, coming from Pierce Beach, down Riverside. We want to thank our first register, it's Mr. Machado, so he gets bid number one. So we're gonna have him lead the charge and see if he'll lead the whole way, back and forth. But we, you know, and we couldn't have done it to get this up and running as quickly. We need to publicly thank, you know, George Austin, he's an avid runner. We see him running around, you know, not only, you know, as recreational, but also doing his, his job because he's in like nine different places at once. But we really need to publicly thank him, and I know he's not gonna put it in the paper, but I'm gonna keep on doing it until he does. But without him, we wouldn't be able to get it up and running. But our, our goal is, the reason why we wanna raise, you know, money right away is, within the next several weeks, we are gonna announce that the grant application process is open. And we are, we have that application on the website already. So the, the teachers, the administrators can start taking a look at it and start thinking about what they want. You know, Mr. Lynch has already gave me several different ideas over in Berkeley. But, you know, and, you know, so it'll be...
Due by November first?
The applications will be due by November first. We're gonna meet at our November meeting and hopefully have the grants to go out so that they can get going by Christmas and next year.
Yep, you know, our, our goal is to give a taste to all of the regions, a little something of what the foundation can give. And then, you know, year, as the year progresses and the following year, you know, we are very hopeful and I, and I think we're very confident that we'll be giving a lot more money out. So we are here, we're kind of doing the informational tour to all the school committees and here, you know, for any kind of questions. So, Mr. Chairman and members, we thank you very, very much for having us here. And I don't know if the ladies, I do this, I apologize if ladies would like to add anything.
You've said it all, with the gravy on the turkey.
If I may, I'm not sure, and I didn't think of this the other night, on Monday when you presented to the Somerset School Committee. I know this is already a very tight timeline that you're very aggressive, that you're trying to follow. Just occurred to me as I'm listening to this now, on Tuesday, November fifth, we have our full professional development day. This takes place here, we've invited the Berkeley Public Schools to join us this year as well. So at one point, we will have all of the educators within all three districts sitting in our Performing Arts Center.
That's something we can present, we can talk about the logistics.
I don't know if we can, I know November first is the deadline that you've established, but that would be a wonderful time to maybe announce, announce a few grants.
It gives us like an extra couple of weeks, so that's really good.
No, I think we, I think we should send it so that we know, we gotta raise money by then. And we are raising money, we got another donation today, another donation, so, yeah.
That's something that, you know, what, maybe do a, you know, a brief presentation, you know, to the entire staff and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I was wondering if, if you could move up the deadline even a little bit. You might be able to announce a few grants that day.
Oh, oh, so, oh, you wanna do that?
That's what I was thinking. That's what I'm saying, aggressively, get a little bit more aggressive, but you'd have every educator in all three districts.
Yeah, that would be great.
At the same time, which has never happened before. So anyway, just...
Oh, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Schoonover.
Nothing you don't have enough going on already.
We, we're good. You know, I, I must say too is that when this was announced in the newspaper, it was truly a tremendous feeling of the amount of individuals that have reached out to us, the amount of businesses saying, how can I get involved? You know, former employees of, of the school, so retirees, how can I give back? So I think that's just the start of something. We've seen some of the foundations that have grown to something really tremendous. It's something, it's the one thing, you know, we feel that was missing. You know, both communities do a great job in providing a great funding for the education of our children. It's just something a little extra. You know, so, you know, your hands are not always that tied. It's then to turn to the foundation and say, wait a minute, you know, maybe we can apply for some money through the foundation for something really special like that.
Jimmy, thank you for your hard work, the whole board.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, if it wasn't for everyone behind the scenes, you know, once again too, we gotta, we gotta recognize...
We have Eric Correa from Correa, Correa, Dave and Ann Sun did all the five oh one three C filings for us pro bono.
How about Johnny who did the website?
So local blast, Bruno Pereira, you know, without his help, he's been doing it pro bono as well. And, you know, we're, we're getting, you know, checks, checks in.
He did the logo.
Did the logo, created logo, he gave us a bunch of different selections of the logo. We're gonna be looking at some of the staff, you know, here in the high school to help us, you know, maybe tie it into some of the curriculum of certain things, you know, to create certain things. You know, we've talked to, yeah, Jen Ashley.
She's gonna do posters for the race.
She's, you know, now in, in...
In her reader block.
Yeah, you know, so, but, but yeah.
And I'm sure that you gave some thought to this, but I would assume since it's all three districts, so to speak, all the applications that come in will be looked at so that every region or every district will be a fair.
Yep, yeah, we wanna make sure that all communities, all three districts are, you know, getting, you know, what they deserve. Yeah, it's, um...
Thank you.
Very cool.
So I know from talking to Mrs. Gagliotti over the years how massive and undertaking this is, so I really am grateful to the three of you and the other board members for taking this on and, and approaching it with a tremendous amount of gusto. So wish you all the success, I know that it only benefits all of us, so thank you so much for it.
I think it's the only way we, we know how to do it in our communities as you, you are sitting in something that we created in, in a very short period of time. So I think, you know, with all your help, yep, you know, it's, it's been great. And I know Mr. McDonald has already signed up for the race as well.
Well, actually, one last thing we'll add with is that the selectmen, we had to have the race approved by the selectmen, and Steve Motors has a challenge to all school, to all the school boards to have a hundred percent participation. And running, and running.
Running or walking, or even pulling a wagon, he said. If someone needs to get pulled into a wagon, they will figure out a way. But yeah, so he has challenges, we forgot to mention it in the case, so maybe you can bring, bring it back.
You put a candy bar for me, I'll...
We also have a team challenge too. So the teams, I know, you know, so we have Lynch, has been talking to the teams that are over in the middle school about, about participating. You know, we just ask, you know, to help, you know, push it along too.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody.
Next item under student achievement, teaching and learning is innovation pathways update, Mr. Schoonover?
Thank you, I shared a copy of the letter that I received from Commissioner Riley. I believe I shared this with you, the email, a couple of weeks ago, but just so you have it in writing. We've been talking about this for a year, I believe. We submitted our initial application for innovation pathways sometime last September. And it's taken a lot of work to get here and I'm just very excited to announce that we've been selected for three different pathways. One in environmental and life sciences, biotech. One in healthcare and social assistance, medical administrative practices, and information technology, computer features, computer science. So now that we've received this, the real fun begins in the planning aspect of it. But I do, I wanna thank Ms. Haskell, who has really done an incredible amount of work putting that final application together, part B of the application, I think it was, where the details that she had to include about what we believe this is going to look like, while we're playing, you know, the planning stages or early planning stages, it's just incredible. So thank you to Ms. Haskell. And with that, I would like for, for Liz to share a little bit more about it. But before, I know that we have, December fourth, I believe, there's an innovation pathways convening session that we've been invited to, so we'll be bringing a team to that. It's a convening session held by DESI for all new schools, for innovation pathways and existing schools, where we'll be learning a lot more about what the next steps will be as well as learning from successful programs that started this, this past year or the year before. So Liz, if there's...
Sure, so the first step, this is, it really is gonna be really fun. I'm so excited about it, it's going to change our school. It's going to change what kids have access to and that is really what the purpose was in, in our application process. So our first step is to put together a design team, so we will have an innovation pathways design team. And we have invited, or will be inviting, about twenty-two people. It does include some of our administrative team at the district level, at the school level. But also, we did decide, as we were talking about this, that we want all of the departments to be represented. This is our school and it belongs to everybody. It's not just because they fit into those pathways and, and those labels that we put on them. There's a really great opportunity for us to do some interdisciplinary work. And really, our, our goal is to get kids ready for the real world and to get some of that experience now. So that when they go to college or they move into the workplace, they have some of, what they're describing is those soft skills, right? They're, they're able to communicate effectively, they're able to write effectively, speak clearly. And, and so the partnerships that Mr. Schoonover mentioned, we are gonna be working with the Mass Hire Board, we've already started some of that work. We are going to be working to, with Durfee High School, they have a career fair and they have invited us to participate in that. So also, we, we get to connect with some other schools and some other kids and some other teachers. And so this design team will be able to really build this innovation pathways journey from the ground up. So we have the framework in place and that foundation in place. And we're, we're very excited about what this does for kids. It will include a one hundred hour work experience in addition to a capstone project. We would like it connected in the three pathways that we currently have. We would also be looking forward to expand those pathways. The pathways were chosen based on the need in this area, in the South Coast. So we are using data to inform that decision-making. And again, these, these categories, they are fairly broad. It's not just for doctors or for people who want to be programmers, computer programmers. We are looking for some of the other pieces that really target our students who might be part of the Title I program or might be part of the special education program. And we are looking to also enhance their experience by giving them the opportunity to take advanced coursework. Advanced placement coursework, Project Lead the Way, we are going to be training some teachers in Project Lead the Way and some of those courses. And also building a partnership with Bristol Community College. They have some coursework that also falls into these categories. It may get kids out of the building, onto a college campus, which would be fantastic. It may also give them an online course experience, which is also really valuable in, in today's workforce and in education world. So again, the possibilities are just endless and really very exciting. So we're gonna start this work, we're expecting that with our current senior capstone courses that are running now, that we will have at, at least a small group that will be working in some of these pathways. It will not be the full proposal that we've put together, but it is a start. So that is for seniors. For our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, I had attended a training in the spring called Signal Success. And again, that's working on some of those workplace skills. And so I am a trained trainer for Signal Success. And so we'll have an opportunity to work with teachers who will in turn work with kids, our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. Again, we're going to start to gauge their interests and get them on board with the innovation pathways that we currently have in place and maybe some of the ones that we will have in the future. Our students are working with Mr. Robidoux and all of our freshmen are going through that computer science course. So that is one of the places that we will likely begin. English classes are also another place where all of our students are at some point during their schedule. So that would also be another kind of target market for us to start to talk to kids. Our guidance team will be instrumental in this work and in talking to kids about their interests, but it's not solely their responsibility. We really want all of our teachers, and again, that's why we included all of the departments, to be reaching out to kids and really, you know, continuing to build relationships with them. And when you start to hear some of the things that may fit into some of our pathways, that we might put kids in contact with some of our design team members or kind of help, help them to see what all of their options are. So we're really encouraged, we're really excited. I'm, I am toning down my excitement, usually I am giddy and giggling because I, it's like almost overwhelming because we're really hopeful that this is going to transfer forms of work that kids are doing. And so, you know, there were classes that I sat in and I would ask, why am I here? We would like our kids at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School never to ask, why am I doing this? Because it's really gonna be hands-on and real-world experience. And we're, we'd like them to go out into the world and people say, wow, we want you because you're coming from Somerset Berkeley.
For all the work you did, I think you've earned a little bit of giddy giggling, so...
Thank you.
This is already going to be the packets at our committee meeting on the twenty-third.
Oh, great, great. Thank you.
I have one question, Ms. Haskell, will there be a time where members of the design team go to the middle school over at Berkeley and here to try to capture those who might go to BP or other?
So we, we are talking about how we include the middle schools. One of the, the portions of, of this journey and, and the work that kids will be doing is with Naviance. You may have heard us talk about Naviance before. It, it will help kids plan their future. So start to envision where they'd like to be. And then we will work together to establish what some of those steps are in terms of higher education, high school. But we'd like to eventually expand that work into our middle schools. So kids would start to think about some of those things now and they'd be able to plan some of... some of it. None of this is set in stone in terms of kids being locked in. So just because you've chosen, for example, the biotech innovation pathway, kids can enter it or leave it at any time if they decide. It's just not for me, and that's one of, that's kind of, that's part of the beauty of it. Some of it may not be about what you actually want to do, it may be about finding out now, "Oh, that's not what I thought it was going to be." I mean, I see a lot of people nodding, like, we've all had those jobs. What did that look like, or what I thought that was going to be, and what it actually is when I get there, is different. So, yes, we would like to work with the middle school. Again, in these planning stages, we're going to need to set some priorities and determine, kind of backward design it for ourselves. Where do we want to be in the next one, three, five years, and then what are the steps that we need to take to get there? One of the things I am going to mention to you, and being that budget is one of the things that is your, the essential function of your work, there was no money at this time that is connected to this designation. It is, it is a huge honor, and, but with it are no dollars yet. So this is not, this is not a grant application as of yet. We are hopeful that we are in the queue for some monies that will be available, but that's a not-yet for us. So one of the pieces that is connected with our plan is an Innovation Pathways capstone coordinator. It would be a full-time position. So I think that we have talked about this in this year-long kind of application process, but eventually, that is something that we would want to consider.
So what would be helpful for us, Ms. Haskell, this is wonderful, but sooner than later, it would be great if you and your team could build a preliminary budget around this innovative pathways, so that we can start looking at this, you know, later than the end of December. Because as we know, as we go into budget season, there's a lot of other things that take priority, so if your team could put something together for us by the end of the calendar year, so we can start thinking around that, that would be helpful.
We've already started to have those conversations, so not a problem.
Thank you.
Sure.
So you preempted my question by saying there was no money. I guess I misunderstood this whole process. I was under the impression that the schools that received this designation last year received hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant funding for the program.
There are schools who did. We did not.
And were there schools this year that received funding?
So I think that for FY '20, I think that there are some that received funding. Again, we did not. So there, I think, this is a really great opportunity, and what the state is aiming to do has us as part of that process. They're, I think, still trying to figure out how the funding is going to work consistently. So, one of the things that we did talk about, which you may recall, is that some of the funding may be similar to our chapter 74?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Voltech Ed.
Voltech Ed programs. But again, I'm not sure that those have been allocated yet.
There is supposed to be, you recall the budget presentations that we've had in the past, where for our foundational enrollment, for our foundation budget, there are certain funds associated either to establish the base, or then that goes beyond, and there's a column always for chapter 74.
Right.
We've been told by the state that there is a column now, or there will be a column now, for Innovation Pathways, and there will be a dollar amount associated with the total enrollment for students involved in Innovation Pathways. I don't recall the exact number, it's somewhere in the order of 1,000 or 1,500 per student enrolled in that. So there will be, or we've been told that there will be a foundational budget component to Innovation Pathways. There was, over the past several years, there have been planning grants that districts, at this stage, once they are designated as Innovation Pathway schools, there have been some small planning grants on the order of about $10,000. The schools that were in this last year received those grants. This year, we were told that that funding was not present, so we're not, we don't have that, those planning grants. But what happens after this, we don't know.
So I happen to have the opportunity to, to be at the State House yesterday, where business leaders actually advocated on behalf of funding for innovative pathways. So there was a detailed presentation on it, a hearing that was really engaging, and I could share some of that information with all of you. And one of the things that we did, we broke out into teams of two and three, and actually went to meet with legislators to advocate for that additional line item, to make sure that that happened, so that legislators will support this, the importance of this type of vocational training that happens in general education schools. One of the things that was really talked about a lot is that we have vocational schools in our area, but they're incredibly waiting lists. And so there are, there's a whole group of people, of students, that are kind of missing out on that particular type of training that would be particularly interesting, would work really well for them. And so there's a, this is a way, Innovation Pathways is actually a way to incorporate more vocational and skills-based training in general education. And I think we had about, I want to say 40 business leaders go through the entire State House yesterday advocating for this. I think it's, there's a lot of support for it, so while I was in the session, I was actually texting Ms. Haskell any grants that we were hearing about, you know, to see if, in the meantime, what our district could apply for.
And when does the legislature make decisions on that, when they're going to fund it?
This was imminent. I think that they were going to be talking about this in the near future. You know, I'll go back to the Mass Business Alliance for Education and try to get an update, and I would certainly share it. This just happened yesterday. So hopefully, there is widespread support for it, and I think they were going to do two lines on that formula. One was going to be for Innovation Pathways, and the other thing that we were advocating for was that another line for additional funding be allocated for any students that are involved in dual enrollment or early college, which is actually a component of this program. So, in the meantime, while I was there, I was advocating with other schools, you know, or talking to other schools who had done this before, to find out what other opportunities for funding we may be able to apply for in the meantime. But there were, we did hear that the big bucket of money is not there this year.
And how many districts, Julie, do you know that are in the Innovation Pathways? I don't want to put you on the spot, or just generally?
No. I gave him my packet, so there's, I think there's like 25, maybe not even, there's 25 pathways that have been identified. I think there's a much smaller number. Yeah.
And I can tell.
Yeah.
It's only 15 or so last year.
Yeah, I think that there are, I can actually share the list of the schools, and Somerset Berkeley wasn't even on this list yet, because we hadn't been approved. So, one, two, three, four, wait, actually, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. There are about 20 schools on the list.
For us.
Before us. And I, New Bedford, I think, was just appropriated one, and they're not on this list as well. So I gave Mr. Schoenover the packet that I received yesterday, and we'll share that with the committee. As a side note, I was going to talk about this as a follow-up to our summer retreat. One of the things we talked about was Innovation Pathways, so I think another follow-up, which we hadn't had a chance to do, was to set up a meeting of our finance committee, and we'll talk to Mr. Taro about that, to kind of get updated on this, and maybe we can get a preliminary understanding of what the financial implications might be in the short term and in the long, because there are, what I've been told is that there are some startup costs associated with the rollout that we might have to look at. And then there's ongoing costs, so we should get better.
So I'm taught in high school that has large amounts of CBT e-pasings.
Right.
After years, and they get reimbursed chapter 70, a large sum for working with classes. That's different than innovation?
That's different than this. Yep, yeah. This, we'll share this information, it was actually a pretty good description of all the components that make up this innovation pathway. So includes, as she said, hours of hands-on kind of instruction out in the community, and includes taking two college-level courses, right?
There are two technical courses and two college-level courses. And the college-level courses could be Project Lead the Way, Advanced Placement, or actual dual enrollment courses in, at community colleges or four-year colleges.
Includes some advising, additional advising, as we said, and post-secondary linkages. So, I think it really, what we heard yesterday is that this will transform education in this building. And I applaud you for making it, the design team include people from across all curriculum areas, because we heard from a couple of schools that had done that, and it really just changes the mindset throughout the whole building. So I, I'm excited, just learning a little bit more yesterday, and we're absolutely going to share it with all of you, what this will mean for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions I can talk? Thank you so much. Next item is under Budget and Financial Matters, Approval of Monthly Invoices for the Purposes of Educational Supplies and Materials, Professional Development, Special Education Tuitions and Transportation, Maintenance Costs, Fringe Benefits, and Other Operating Expenditures. We have a series of warrants this evening for signature. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Taro?
I had hoped to be able to call Mr. Taro, talk about a couple of items on here, and I'll do that just for informational purposes, but there were a series of entries here from the fine arts area that are listed very differently than most of the other entries, and make it impossible to understand what these expenditures are for. And I was just curious as to why those particular entries, I'm looking at pages, page six and page seven.
Want me to hand this down?
If you don't mind, I apologize.
And I may not have any answer for you tonight, but I will, I will research it for you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Most of all of the other entry, at least give us an understanding of what the expenditure was for, but these are just a bunch of numbers and nothing to indicate, except that they're for the art department and the music department.
Could you reference the page number again for me, please?
Six and seven.
Page six. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Actually starts on page five, the bottom.
Okay, I'll have to look into that for you. I'm not sure why there's not enough detail on that.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions for me, Charles? I would ask the members to sign these warrants before we leave this evening. Next item under Budget and Financial Matters is 2018-2019 Financial Update. Mr. Taro?
Sure. As you had requested last, at the last meeting, I provided you with an updated financial report that was generated on September 5th, to see what the end of the year looks like. Since that time when we generated this report, we did some reconciliations with payments made from the Department of Education. We identified some potential charges that they didn't charge us for, but we also identified potentially that they didn't distribute all the money that we needed to receive as well. So we're in the process of contacting the Department of Education to find out what the discrepancy was. I know there was some communications on a listserv for the business managers asking questions about delay and the timeliness of a distribution of funds. So Cowan is working on trying to identify those differences, but I don't think it'll materially change what you're seeing here, as you have, you have in front of you, so...
So you anticipated our meeting in October will...
I was hoping to actually have the answer beginning of the week, so I apologize for not having that for you, because I'm trying to wrap up and do the end-of-year reports to the state.
Yeah.
And so...
You haven't gotten those responses.
I haven't, so, but we're, we're working on it.
Do I read this correctly, that we did have a surplus?
Yes, based on, based on this report, it's 122,000 to the positive. Yes.
So I just wanted to suggest that maybe the Budget Committee should have a meeting sometime reasonably soon to meet with Mr. Taro, because I think there are a couple of other issues that were raised in our audit report that might, might require some attention.
I did have an opportunity to read the last year's audit report and some of the recommendations in there.
Maybe if you set up, I'll do a poll tomorrow to the committee and see, try to pick out an availability in the near future.
Thank you, Mel. Any other questions for Mr. Taro on this report? Thank you, Mr. Taro.
Thank you.
Well, not so much on this particular report, but back to the warrants. If anyone's questioning or wants more information of those missing items, they're actually right there. So we can easily, just when you're signing the warrants, if you want to just fan through them and find it, because all the, though we get, I think Mr. Taro sends this report, or all the business managers send this report as a...
Summary.
As a summary, but the actual invoices, which I try to go through, are actually the ones that are presented to us, because that's where you're going to get all the information, not, I would urge you not to use this report when you're signing the waivers. You should always look at the bills.
But it will be, with Mr. Pierce's point, I think it would be beneficial if there was more detail. So going forward, I know Mr. Taro will make every effort to do that, but I do agree with you as well. The hard copy's right here.
Yeah. And the other, and the other piece is, I would hate to have our business manager using this report to detail every invoice, because I would rather have him focus on other items than a simple report for us when we do have the actual invoices in front of us. So that's just my two cents.
And just, just to the, there is more information and more detail that's entered in when they submit requisitions. I'm just not sure why it's not showing on that report. So the information really may be in the system, they may be very consistent, what you see with the invoices in front of you, it may be just modifying the report if that's the case.
Thank you. Next item, discussion on signing of bill schedule warrants. So at our last meeting last week, we had had a brief, very brief conversation about changing our methodology or policies for signing bill schedules, because, bill schedule warrants, because our meetings will be moving to a month, once a month cycle. Mr. Pierce, did you have any opportunity to look for the statutes on that?
I did not, no.
Are you ready to have this discussion this evening, or should we defer this item to the next agenda?
Why don't we defer it for a month?
You maybe comfortable with that?
Yep.
Meanwhile, how are we going to address the two invoices that we're going to be receiving?
I can't, in the past, when this has happened on off time, I think Robin or someone has kind of just sent out an email saying, "Can you please stop by?" So you can do it in general to the whole community for that, I would recommend, and then look to maybe establish a more efficient procedure going forward.
Mr. Taro, does that make sense to you on a temporary basis?
Sure.
Just for a month.
You maybe comfortable with that?
That's easy.
Thank you for having me.
Next item on the agenda under Policies for Second Reading is Acceptable Use Internet Safety Policy.
So both, both of these go hand in hand. This is the process that we follow as we go through meeting one, when we go through meeting two. It's important to note, though, that these two policies have already been distributed to the students. They were part of the beginning of the school year, so if there are any changes from this committee or any comments, we will have to make that amendment and make sure that we distribute that out. and make sure that we distribute that out.
Are there any amendments or suggestions being made? I look for a motion to...
I just had a couple of questions regarding the, the maintenance or computer care maintenance and support agreement. One, I'm...
Are we taking these both together, or does...
They can evolve together, yeah.
One, I do encourage a maintenance type fee plan or type thing, so I, I don't want to, I don't want the public to think that I don't support something similar to this. But what I do have an issue is what it's covering and what it doesn't cover. And I'm just going to use specifically my cell phone. For instance, I pay, I think, nine dollars a month for an insurance plan on my phone. If something happens to my phone that needs to be replaced, there's a deductible and they send me a new phone. What I'm seeing here is we're paying $100, $75, $50, and $25. And if something goes wrong, I am going to have to cough up some more money. So for instance, if my phone's battery dies, it's not charging. And if it's still under the warranty, I go to the store, they give me a new phone, or I call Verizon and I pay the $80 deductible, or whatever the case may be, and they give me a brand-new phone. But something like a battery, I don't know how many computers will hold its charge for a full day after X amount of years.
If I may, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I think I recall. The list of repairs is if you don't choose the insurance.
So, so Mr. Larry is right, so, and you bring up a good point, Mr. Machado. We probably should have that clarified. So just by way of background, just to reiterate, what the technology department found was that the insurance company that we were using for previous purposes was slowing down the repair, which meant because of the way that the claims had to be submitted, it was actually taking a lot more time for the tech group to fill out the claim, ship it out, and get it back. So their proposal back to us was if we could set up an internal extended maintenance fee. There was also another piece of that, too, was that not everybody bought insurance. So they wanted to make it more flexible for the students. So what they did was they set up their own internal extended maintenance fee, which is what you see there with the 175, 50, 25. This is what we should clarify in the, in the, in the policy, is that if a, if a family decides not to take advantage of the internal extended maintenance fee and something happens to their Chromebook, then they will be responsible to pay that à la carte charge based on what the condition was or what the incident was on the Chromebook. So it gives parents a little bit more flexibility to say, okay, I may not be able to, or I may not want to do the extended maintenance fee, which will cover everything that they can fix on this list. I'll take my chances. And if, say, you know, the touchpad goes or the LCD panel goes, then that's what the maintenance will be to repair that à la carte.
Okay, so, so that makes a lot more sense. And when I, because when I went to the middle school, I asked the question during that, I don't know if any of you were there. They were saying that I'm paying $25 for the maintenance, but I'm also responsible for all. And they said they copied the high school plan. And it contradicted itself, it covers loss and all of that, but down on the bottom said it did not. So we're, so this plan, I think, I want to recommend now to everyone to buy it because if you're paying $100 and everything is covered and our team is doing it, I think it's a great, it's a great program then. But if we have to pay all these other, I was like, I don't think that's a good policy, so.
So what we should do is, and Robin, if we could put this in the, in the notes, underneath extended maintenance fee, where we get to the list of the à la carte items, we should put language in there that says if a student decides not to participate in the extended maintenance fee, the repair course, costs for the individual pieces will be as listed below. And we'll confirm that with Mr. Lada, make sure that that's proper language as well.
Thank you.
And you, so could you, I'm, I'm sorry, I probably wasn't paying attention. Can you just clarify for me, these were presented to us before the beginning of the school year?
Yes.
I thought we approved them.
We did.
There's no indication in what we received that there were changes to these or any kind of markup that indicates what the changes were? Do I understand there were some changes?
Uh-uh, there are no changes to it.
So why, why is that before?
Second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading, yeah. And then Mr. Machado just brought up which, just some clarification on how the language is just underneath the maintenance fee. So it doesn't change the spirit of the, of what students have signed to the state. Just maybe put some clarification around it.
Good sense.
If I may, since we're reviewing this, the, the item where it lists classes of 2023 down to 2020, where the payments are in increments of 25, is it clear that it is essentially $25 per year? So if you have a child in the class of 2023, you're paying $100 and that will be the extended maintenance fee for the four years? Is that, I'm not sure if that's clear?
I don't think that was clear because I thought it was a, you know, the first year is $100, second year is $75.
Right, it's really $25 per year.
I would just, I would just say $25 per year. The, the maintenance cost is $25 per year. You have the option to pay all four years at once if you choose.
So we'll, we'll add some clarity for that as well.
It doesn't change what we were told.
Right, I just want to make sure that parents know that they're paying for it and they're all set for the next four years or three years.
And then the other piece that I think, if the public doesn't know, I love what the committee has decided that after their four years of, of education here at the high school, that the actual Chromebook, it becomes their property. So it's almost like you're paying $25 for an insurance plan or $100 for an insurance plan that you will have a Chromebook when you leave. Will be. If it will have any value, no, but I think it's nice that the student will be able to keep it. It's their property.
Yeah, but at that point, it'll be a old friend, right?
And it encourages students to maintain better care of it as well.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a, a motion to approve on second reading the acceptable use of internet safety policy.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll also entertain a motion to approve the computer care maintenance and support agreement.
As amended? As discussed?
As amended.
Yep. So move.
Second.
Motion on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Under Unfinished Business, item number one, Parking Easement Update and Proposed Warrant Article.
You have the materials, a draft of the proposed warrant article to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen. I noted in the newspaper recently that warrant articles have to be submitted by this Friday, I believe. And so this is only intended to be a draft. I think we can continue to discuss the matter with the, with the selectmen if there are any issues. But you should have, I'm not sure whether that deadline applies to other municipal agencies, but I guess it would be just as welcome to have this in to them with the understanding that we can discuss it with them and if there's, there are any issues and if there's anything that any member of the committee has any question about or concern, just let me know. One of the things that we intend to do in this, the language I included here is says that grant of easement is intended to convey to the district sufficient interest in the real estate within the easement area to subject the use of the easement area by students for parking and other school-related activities to the same scope of authority over the premises as is afforded to the school district and its administrators and staff to establish, maintain, and preserve a safe and secure school environment to the full extent permitted by the student handbook, district policy, and existing state and federal law. That's intended to apply the lesser Fourth Amendment status, the criteria for search and seizure that exists for school districts and doesn't apply to police. So students who would be parking in that area would be subject to administration doing, doing searches of vehicles according to the case law that provides that they don't have to have reasonable cause to make such a search.
So if we approve this, it will actually hold a spot essentially with an approval of our committee?
The special town meeting isn't until the first week of December, as I recall. And I don't think, and the warrant is not usually printed until a few weeks before the town meeting. So it would give us ample opportunity to discuss it with the selectmen if there are any concerns. The other thing I wanted to mention is my, my personal feeling is that we should have a traffic engineer look at the parking situation, particularly on Prospect Street. Students have been parking along Luther Avenue for a significant amount of time. I think even, even before this building was constructed, students were parking in that area. The area on Prospect Street now has been lined for diagonal parking rather than the kind of parallel parking that existed there before. And I'd like to be sure that any safety concerns that a traffic engineer might see would be, that we'd be aware of them and be able to address. I know that Mrs. Schoonover's been talking with the local police officials and Mr. Brown, I was at a meeting with Mr. Brown this afternoon with the Insurance Trust, and he mentioned that one of the senior officers had looked at the situation and wasn't particularly concerned about it. But I have a little concern about students parking. I've been over there to look at the situation and I think they might be inclined to be walking in the travel lane of Prospect Street. And did I discuss with you, Mr. Schoonover, the possibility of putting a gate?
Yes.
In the fence there? So one of the possibilities is for us to have a gate there on Prospect Street that would access the walkway that already exists to the elevator on the rear of the bleachers so that the students could enter there and walk along the concrete walkway rather than walking in the street, both Prospect and Luther. So I would, I would feel more comfortable with Mr. Schoonover's assistants, Dan Tavarez, providing me with the name of the traffic engineer that worked on the, on the high school project. So I'd like, if the committee has no objection, do just reach out and get a sense of whether they'd be willing to look at it and what it might cost.
I think that would be a good idea, especially given if there's also going to be a need to do snow removal, if that's going to be something that we're going to be maintaining. So right now, I mean, we could look at it and say, okay, it's not an issue. But if and when there's a time where we have to maintain that due to bad weather, is it configured properly to do that?
And one of the neighbors there actually called me shortly after the area was lined and the same individual neighbor appeared at the selectmen's meeting and raised some concerns. So I think if we go to a special town meeting and, and ask the community to approve this, if we have had a traffic engineer look at it and address these safety concerns, the, the town meeting would probably be more, more receptive to and be satisfied that we've actually addressed the safety concerns.
Just got a couple of questions. I think Mrs. Field just answered my question. So the easements pass, we're responsible for snow removal in that area?
Probably.
Okay.
You know, I guess it, it depends on what the town decides to do there, but we would have to assume that we'll be responsible. Because the area, if we're going to use that for parking during the winter, the area, there's not a lot of area there to pile snow up. And the snow would probably have to be removed, have to have a front-end loader or something that actually pushes the snow out of the, out of the area.
Question number two, I drove by you today, both Prospect and Luther, and all the spots were taken. Luther, we're going down Prospect, probably up to maybe the 50-yard marker on Clifford Hill. Those spots were taken. Are we getting revenues from those right now?
The idea of, once we have an easement, is that we would require a parking pass to park in those areas, whether it would be the same price as parking right next to the building or not. I guess that would be up to the administration, but that was the idea because we want, we wanted to be clear that we view this as school parking and that students would be informed that we have the same...
Till that point in time, you're free there?
I don't know.
We are not charging for any parking on Luther, Prospect, or Clifford Hill.
Okay.
Okay. I just have a quick question. How many passes do we currently sell already now per year?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head exactly.
And we're, and we're, and currently, I believe, we sell more passes than we actually have parking spots?
A few more, not like last year, but some more.
I actually can answer that because Mr. Taro was mentioning that in fact to me today. And it's about, we realized the last couple of years, about $12,000 fees, that's about 240 students.
So, okay, so my concern is we don't have enough parking spots as it is. Now we are going to add more parking spots, but we're going to charge more parking. We're going to actually, but this is, this is how I'm looking at it. We're going to ask the town for town, at town meeting, to give us permission to take over town land, or give us an easement to town land. Not, first of all, the search, I'm all for, I think that's a great move. I would not support this at town meeting if we're going to be charging students to park there. That's like me asking you, can I borrow your driveway? But if your kid comes over and parks your car on your driveway, I want to charge them. Because that's how I'm, that's how I take it. Because, so I own this piece of property as a town person and I currently do not pay for it when I park there. But now you want me to give you the parking spot as school property or an easement, but when my child comes and visits me, you're going to charge me for that parking spot? I personally think the town should say no, because basically you're double taxing us. You know how I feel about the parking as it is? Because at least some other school districts like Tivening, they do charge for parking, but that parking spot is there. They get assigned a parking spot which is, belongs to that student. Well, we're doing, we're playing the airline. We charge for more parking, I mean, more tickets than we actually have seats. And then when you run out of seats, oh, sorry, too bad. But if you park in a teacher's parking spot, you get tagged or citation. You're forced to go somewhere else. But now you're asking us to give you, so I'm going to urge the community at town meeting to vote no because basically it's a double tax, in my opinion. But the second thing is if you want to hold the amount of parking passes as it is and then ask for the town for the search reasons, so we actually have some type of liability, I mean, so it just gives if we have any, I'm all for it. But to charge more for town property, I'm sorry, I, I just cannot support that. And I would be very, and I am going to be very vocal at town meeting to ask people not to be allowed that their children and their families be double taxed because this is definitely a double tax, something that they already own, they are able to do so. Nothing changes. These kids are already parking there. They're, they're, they are allowed to park there by law. And what you're doing is you're taking that right away from them. So A, not to do the search, but also possibly charge. So I need to really understand, are we doing this so we can get more revenue? And if that's the case, so I know to vote no. And also to urge my fellow citizens in the town to vote no. Or is this, we, we want our students to be there, but we also want to have the same right as searching town, I mean, school property? So that's my question, because I support it, but I don't support the charging or extra revenue.
I would not, I would only agree with you. However, I did a little bit of research. Not a student that knew South paid $350 to park... However, I did a little bit of research, not a student at Newton South pays $350 to park for the year. So we.
In the, in the street, on the city street.
So, so we're looking pretty good, is what I'm saying.
That's right. Students in Newton park on the street. The city has given the school the right to create student parking on the street in Newton. Newton, one of the wealthiest communities in the state.
Wealthiest, wealthiest community of the state. I would like to ask the question, what does currently Swansea charge?
They do charge a fee.
Okay. Do they charge them to park in the street or do they charge them to park in the parking lot?
I believe it's a school parking lot.
Okay. Do they, Fall River, do they charge students to park in the parking lot or in the? So if you want to, I would, I would rather us compare ourselves to local locations than versus Newton and high welcome, I mean, high wealthy income families. So.
So my understanding is that the discussion this evening was to try to agree that we.
Well, I can't, I need to know more information.
Let me just finish before, so my understanding is that we were trying to essentially put a placeholder in for, for the warrant article in December, which gives us plenty of time to formulate questions and get information so that then you can decide whether or not you want to support this or not support this at town meeting in December. So I think all the questions you're asking are really, really good ones. But I think that perhaps we should formulate them and, and put them in some sort of a list so the folks can do the research that you're looking for, try to determine what the pricing, you know, parking costs are in the different surrounding communities, as well as do the necessary research to determine how many spots there are versus how much usage is. Because that's the sort of stuff you're looking for right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and I think, I'll, I'll just vote no for, for at this time being, because I don't know enough of information before I even want to submit it to the town.
Okay.
And, and I honestly, you know, and I just basically want to verbally say to the community is that they should not be supporting this if you're going to be taxed on.
You know, Victor, I think it's totally irresponsible for you to make, to make that statement at this point without any real discussion or without any real background. The fact is, we charge fees on the campus to students. And we had a problem where the administration issued too many parking passes so that students paid for parking passes and were unable to park, there were not enough parking spaces. So they reduced the number of parking passes that they've issued this year so that students aren't paying for parking that they can't have on the campus. But we're looking to create additional parking for our students in these two areas where students have, at least with respect to Luther Avenue, traditionally parked, and on Prospect Street where they, some students have parked and perhaps unsafely. We're assuming a maintenance obligation to strike, perhaps put in bumper bars, depending on whether that's necessary, to open a gate and access to the campus so students can park there safely. We're assuming all of these expenses, and I think for that, we're entitled to collect the same kind of fee. Maybe a reduced fee, maybe not, for the parking that exists on the campus. And one of the primary parts of this, from my personal perspective, is to assure the safety of our students as they're parking. And if we don't provide this parking in a safe manner, they're going to park places around the school that may not be safe, just like the problem that was created on Clifford Holland last year and the disaster that was created in the, in the neighborhood of Hathaway and Wardell a couple of years ago where our students were literally terrorizing the neighborhood. So we can have all the discussion we want, but we've been talking and discussing this for the last several months, and we can have all the more discussion that we want. But I think it's a reasonable proposal and it has been discussed preliminarily with town officials and they appear to be on board with it. So.
Well, I just, when we asked the question, are we responsible for the snow removal? We didn't have that answer. So until I have all the answers and all the facts, I cannot support this. And it's, you know what, having it, putting on a ballot in front of the people without even knowing that's where we're going to move, I just can't support it at this time. So if it was just to, but I'm sure I'll be outvoted, but I, I also have a major issue to continue, regardless if, if other school districts do or not. All I know is before this region began, do you know how much the students used to pay for parking? Anybody know?
Nothing.
I know how much we paid when I was a student here at Somerset High School in 1962 and 1963, but I think that's irrelevant.
Well, all I know is this region has charged parents to park for their car. And yet, you know, before we didn't have to do that. And I, and I just find it, it's, how much money did we bring in? Sorry, you had mentioned that.
It's, the last two years, about $12,000.
$12,000. You know, I have a very difficult time asking families to dish out $12,000, pay to play, all of these things. It's always charging the families more and more. When we have families, I mean, when we have people coming in to ask us for a, a field trip, we're always very concerned, can your families afford it? You know, what, what are we going to do when people can't afford? Do we have a policy when kids can't afford to park for their car?
But Victor, we provide transportation for free, so it's, so parking is a privilege on the campus. It's not as if they don't have other transportation methods to get here.
Yeah, but the reality is, it's different. In reality, you know, students get, their car. I, next month, I'm going to bring a whole bunch of school districts that have staff pay for parking as well. We don't want to do that either. I don't want our staff to have to pay for parking. But I'm just saying, other communities do that. It's why we're choosing just the families and not everyone. So to me, I just have a hard time asking families that already owned it. You know, these students are already parking that. I commend us for trying to make it safer and all of that. But there's to the point where, how much is it going to cost us to snow removal and all of that versus the fees? We're, we're opening ourselves to more expenses that we don't even know. I don't think we've done enough vetting in this information, and that, that's just my point.
So I.
So based on, on what Mr. Pierce suggested is that the warrant for the, the warrant will be closed this Friday. So I will vote, I'll make a motion to accept the parking easement warrant article as laid for us so that we can reserve a spot on the, on the town meeting coming up in the fall, in the spring, things early.
December 2nd.
December 2nd. And we can continue to talk about it. I'll make that motion with the understanding that there has been a lot of discussion over the past couple of years about the implementation of parking fees. And it has been, I think, extensively vetted. So personally, I, I have looked at other communities who have done it, as we all have. And I, I, I feel that it's important that we have this easement presented to the town in December for consideration. So I'll make that motion.
Looking for a second?
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
No discussion.
Oh, sorry.
You, you mentioned that the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District has vetted all this information, how much each location charges. Can I have a copy of that report?
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to talk about what I.
No, no, but I, there's been work currently made, and I'm assuming that's public information?
When I said we were vetting it, before we implemented the, the fee structure and the policy to charge the fees, we talked about it at, at budget hearings, we talked about it on the school committee, so we did.
Any documents?
There should be in a minute's.
Are you referring to athletic user fees or parking?
Parking, like I would like to know, you had mentioned that you've, you've seen many other communities that do charge. I want to, if there's a document that's, that's been submitted to the school committee, I would like a copy of that.
That was from when we first implemented this.
So it has to be public information?
We had a list of the committees that.
Okay, so if I could get a copy of that.
I would, I would assume that there were parking fees at the high school when the high school was under your jurisdiction as a school committee member, Victor.
No, and the answer is no.
There were no parking fees?
I, I, if it was, it was way before my time and I would afford it every single year. Because I, I'm very adamant against that. So if I could just see the structure, since there hasn't been documents that has been presented to the school committee, obviously it's an open, it's a public information, I would like a copy of that. So, because I was not part of that process, I wasn't on the committee, and I would like to be fully informed on my decision. So when I do make recommendations to the town or when it does continue, I'm fully educated like all of you are.
Okay.
So motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So six in the affirmative and one in opposition. Next item on the agenda this evening, under unfinished business, is annual building inspection update. I would like to take a moment to thank Mr. Schoen over, Mr. Campos, and our other guides for the building inspection that took place on Wednesday, August 21st. Does anyone have any comments or observations they'd like to share?
I just have one crazy question. You know, the little bubbles we saw on some of the floors, were they there last year?
Not that I recall.
Okay. That's something that happened over the last.
I haven't noticed those before, but Mr. Campos did confirm that, that has been, those were there last year. Maybe not to the degree that we saw them that evening, but it has been an ongoing matter. Certainly not to the degree, because we all noticed it when we walked into some of those.
There was more notice. A little layer of bubbles.
I, I unfortunately was not able to attend because of a school obligation at the middle school. I was just wondering, was there, was there a report that was written up and presented to the administration? And if so, is that, because usually, at least at the K A, we have like a form that we all fill out, sign, and submit it to the school. I was wondering if there's a copy of that, if I could have a copy, since I wasn't, I wasn't able to be present.
Yeah, those, did any school committee members turn those in at all? I, I have not received any.
I wasn't present.
No, I know that, no, but I know that as we were going through the tour, Carlos and his team was making notes. So that should be, and I know that, that those issues were highlighted. The checklist that we have is, is pretty extensive. I don't know if it's the same one that you use.
It is, yes.
But Mr. Campos walked through all of the areas with us and highlighted the areas of concern that we had. In addition to that, I'm not sure if they keep copies of that, but each classroom had a checklist on it. So as you'll apply, it says exactly what was going on in each of those rooms. So if Mr. Campos has copies of those or had kept those, I would think he would for record that that was.
Yeah, it's just that that form that, that we use, it has a room, it has a section where the school committee actually signs off, like who inspected and presents it to the school and where the, the principal also signs. So I'm not sure why it's not being used correctly. At least that's the purpose of it. So I, I think members that were there, you may want to, at least, or maybe compile all the information with Carlos so we can have a degree on it, vote it, and present it to the, for public record as well. Because like, for instance, hearing about a bubbling on the floor, those are things that I, I'm not aware. I, I didn't, were there any lights off, out, were there any other issues, like boards, blinds, anything like that? Right now, the only thing that I'm hearing is that there was an inspection and there were bubbles on the floor. I would like to see that everything else is fine, which I'm sure is, thank goodness. But I definitely think we need to present something to the administration saying that we did inspect the actual building. So that's just my thought.
Administration was present with us at the time of the inspection. And, you know, as Mrs. Field had indicated, we've used that checklist in years past as more of a guideline than a, than a government document that needs to be signed and counter-signed by, by the building principal. So that, you know, that if we're willing to look to do that, I, I don't necessarily think that it would be fair to try to do it retroactively. Because of the fact that, again, we haven't used that document in that manner before. I, I'm not part of the Somerset K A school committee, so I, I, you know, maybe you guys use it a little differently. But in the past, we've used it as a, as a.
Checklist?
Yeah, more a checklist.
So maybe we just need to revise the document for next year without that signature because it clearly says who inspected, signed, and presented to this principal. And so we're using the document that we're not. So it just maybe just needs to be revised. But meanwhile, if someone could just, you know, instead of me coming back and actually walking with extolium as well, I just think it would be just great if I could just have a summary of what, what was seen, so.
So for the next agenda, Robyn, if you could put on the agenda that will provide a summary of the building inspection in October. Will that suffice, Victor?
Oh, absolutely. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
I have, I have one question. On, on the invoices, I noticed that there was an invoice from Fisher to, and I forget exactly how it was characterized, but it was to either rebuild or do something to the shot put area. And I had raised the concern about the fact that the shot put area wasn't being properly maintained. So I guess the solution was to bring, I bring in an outside contractor to do that. And it's occurred to me, I wonder if we have a schedule. We have a groundskeeper, a full-time groundskeeper, but I'm wondering if we have a detailed schedule of how, how the property should be maintained. In other words, does he, does he cut the grass once a week? Does he cut it once every 10 days? What areas does he cut on certain days? Is he responsible for trim? Does he do that in conjunction with the days that he, with cuts and trims in certain areas? Does, does he maintain the shot put area, the javelin area, the baseball field, the softball fields? I would like to see, I, I'm not sure if that's the standard in other districts. The question that comes to my mind, and I, I mentioned this before, is when we were in our budget season, there was a proposal for us to hire an outside landscape contractor to maintain certain aspects of the grounds. And we didn't do that, and I didn't support that at the time, because I wasn't satisfied as to whether our own crew was capable of doing that work. And for some reason, it wasn't getting done, or whether the work was much more than we could reasonably expect our own staff to handle. And I'd like to find an answer to that, so that, because I think it is definitely important that we properly maintain the grounds. And we had a situation with the baseball field where we had to spend a significant amount of money this year, or last spring, because it got overgrown. And we had a situation in the outfield, which I assume we addressed, because I see the football team practicing a puzzle. But I'd like us to really focus on whether we, we are short-staffed and not able to do it. And if that's the case, then is the best solution adding a staff person or a part-time staff person during the growing season? Or is the best solution having a landscape contractor do the work during the busy growing season? So I think it's, it's an issue that we should try to come to an answer on, you know, within the, within the next, you know, maybe six or nine months. And it's, it's going to require us, I think, to kind of test by having a schedule and saying, you know, we should be doing this job every five days or every eight days. And if we find that it's just impossible to accomplish that, then we know that we need either an additional staff member or outside assistance.
If I could just piggyback, Mr. Pierce, I believe we have electronic work order system now?
We do.
And what is the, can we run a report to see what issues have been submitted and when was the completion date?
That was actually one of, that was an issue that was raised during, during the tour of the building. And I actually requested, I believe, a report of, of work orders, because I understand the software, software that we have will show when the work orders are submitted and when they're addressed.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be very helpful also to figure, realize, to help us figure if we are properly staffed. And, and I don't know if this is something that we could. And and I don't know if this is something that we could ask the STA, um, our clerical team, and everyone. If everyone could fill out a report monthly, something similar to what we do at our work, everyone is responsible for a certain area, where basically, they just fill out a quick report, shouldn't take more than three minutes. Any lights out in your room, any markings on your walls, anything like that, and they just submit it to the administration, and someone could create a work order as well, because there's, no one will know their room better than the actual teachers, um, or s- you know, staff, if they may actually, instead of asking just our administration and custodial staff to go around and see something, I think more eyes looking at the issues, we may get better results, and, you know, obviously, we wanna make sure this building maintains for the next fifty, sixty, seventy years if possible. But I I think that would be very helpful, and I obviously, it's, uh, it's something that we're gonna be asking our, uh, staff to do. I think we need to vet this through their unions to see if it's something that, you know, if they would be willing to do, so. And it's, like I said, at work, it's very simple. It takes me usually, I have a a very large wing, uh, with, and it usually takes me twenty minutes to do, but it's, when I say a large wing, I'm talking probably the size of this whole bottom floor of the, uh, the, you know, so just trying to maintain the this, the building, you know, because it may be something that we see gum on a rug, but no one else is seeing it, even though we walk by it a hundred times, so.
So Robin, if you, uh, is it deliverable for, uh, the next school committee meeting? Um, if we can work together to try to get that list of work orders?
Mr. Tara will, uh, communicate with both Mr. Campos and Mr. Lebec to, uh, to get that list of work orders that have been submitted.
Any other, uh, information that we'd like, so we can finish the big conversation about the, uh, building, uh, inspection at the next meeting? Any other questions or comments on this topic? Okay, on to the next one. Uh, item number three under unfinished business is summer retreat follow-up.
Okay, so, uh, very quickly, there are a number of items that we said that we would follow up on the summer retreat, one of those being innovation pathways, and we heard a report on that today. Uh, a- as we also discussed, we'll be setting up a budget subcommittee to kind of look at the costs associated with that, both short-term and long-term. Uh, one of the other items that we discussed that we wanted to follow up in, uh, was in regards to school culture, and, um, we are still waiting to hear back from the Mark Center as to when that in in-service will be. That's something that the, um, school committee will be invited to, and that will talk a lot about bullying and and whatnot. The, um, I believe the policy subcommittee will also be getting some information regards to kind of looking at our policies and seeing where that, those can be, um, updated and enhanced, uh, given recent advice from, um, MAS C and other, and best practices among the other school districts. Um, and then, in regards to school culture, I wanna thank the superintendent for handing all of us this book. It's something that we we talked about at our retreat, just being part of the learning culture here at the district, so this is something, I believe, all administrators-
Yeah, all principals, assistant principals, content coordinators, and central office, uh, leadership. We've all, uh, received copies of this book. We are having, uh, a book chat, a book discussion, uh, among ourselves, but we also want to make sure that both school committees receive members of the same book, so you can, uh, on some level, be involved with the same things that we're discussing as, uh, a leadership team. And, uh, Mrs. Gagliardi and Mr. Larrabee had a great idea that, uh, perhaps, uh, mid-year, mid midway through the school year, uh, we can have maybe a follow-up to the summer retreat, and one of the items can be to have a a book chat among, uh, the school committee members.
It's a thin book, so it's not War and Peace by any stretch of the imagination.
So I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And Todd Whitaker, one of the authors of this book, uh, is our planned speaker, I think, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-
Twenty twenty.
Uh, for the SEL summit.
Oh, good. Excellent. That's awesome. We tried to get him this year, but he wasn't available.
When is that summit?
Um, yeah, the summit, the SEL summit, it w- and we'll be sending out the link to all school committee members. That is scheduled for Saturday, October twenty-sixth. It's a free summit. Uh, we have, I think we have over forty-six different workshops happening, and the keynote speaker is Charlie Applestein, who wrote the book, There Is No Such Thing As A Bad Kid. And, uh, we're very excited. He actually has been doing workshops all over the region and has been really well-received, correct? Yes. So, um, so that's something we'll send out, so any school, and that's open to school committee members, um, educators from across the state, so. So that's one thing we'll do in regards to, uh, that's in regards to the school culture piece. Strategic planning was another follow-up item. We did have a, a subcommittee meeting prior to this. Uh, we talked about some options for how to do the next strategic plan. We've got a couple of, a couple of ideas and options. We're going to come back with at least two options, um, and costs associated with it, schedules. The goal is to have a, um, strategic planning process that will happen in beginning of two, twenty twenty, so that we can have the plan ready to launch at the start of the next fiscal year.
Julie?
Yep.
Talking about that, is that similar to the one we had, the vision area of-
Yes.
Okay, awesome, okay.
Yeah, so we might not do it as full-scale, because we-
Or the two-day thing, like that?
It might only be one day. I think there was some, uh, feedback that we should only do it one day, but we're looking at a couple of different options for facilitators. So we can offer that, costs and whatnot, to the, to consider. Um, and then, I think, though, so we hope to have that at the next meeting, if not sooner, for your consideration. And then the last piece was, uh, school committee goals, so I'll leave that up to you, because we had talked about a couple of options based on our conversation at the retreat.
So are there any other questions, uh, items under item number three?
Just a comment.
Yep.
Love this.
Good.
Love it.
Okay.
And it's not War and Peace.
Yeah.
Uh, item number four is school committee goals update, which kind of dovetails with what Mrs. Gagliardi was just talking about. Um, we had a s- a, uh, strategic planning and visioning subcommittee meeting prior to the meeting this evening, and at that subcommittee meeting, uh, we found three areas that, uh, sort of, again, dovetail back, who Mrs. Gagliardi was reporting on, uh, that we want to structure some goals on. Uh, the first one is innovation pathways, um, so we can adequately understand and support the initiative. Um, item number two is school culture, um, and item number three was, uh, supporting and developing, um, a strategic plan initiative for this year. So those are the three goals. Um, we are gonna craft language and send it out to the school committee for approval at the next meeting, but we just wanted to get everyone's, uh, approval that those are three areas of focus for us this year, and just ask if there's anything else we should look to include in on that list. What was that third area? Um, the completion of and support of the strategic plan. Okay.
And these are things we wanna get done this year, so we're trying to be realistic.
Yeah.
We don't wanna-
No, I I think three goals is, uh, a doable, measurable, and so.
So once we get the language on like those general goals, we'll also work on some, um, key actions and benchmarks, so that, in general terms, we can-
Any questions or comments? All right, so we'll work on getting that out to all the school committee members for the next, uh, next meeting in October. Next item on the agenda is other matters of information. Uh, item number one is approval of minutes of prior meetings. I'm looking for a motion to approve the joint open session meeting minutes of August eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Salute.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions?
All abstained.
So six in the affirmative, one abstention. I'm looking for approval for the joint executive session minutes of August eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Salute.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions?
Abstained.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention. I'm looking for approval for the, or looking for a motion to approve the open session minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Salute.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
There are, there are a couple of, there are a couple of typos in these minutes, which, you know, I ordinarily discuss with Robin, but, um, so, um, one, but one that I, which is more substantive is on the second page where we talked about the parking easement, and it says the west side of Prospect Street, and we're actually talking about the east side of Prospect Street.
Would not have picked that out.
There are a couple of other minor, just type of graph there, as it all showed it, Robin.
So I'm looking for a amended motion to approve the, uh, the minutes of, uh, the open session minutes of August fifteenth with that substantive parking easement change.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion, my original motion.
Okay. Is that easier?
It's a lot easier that way.
I'll make a, um, a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstention.
Nope, two.
Two. So five in the affirmative and two abstentions. I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve the executive session minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Any discussion?
There, um, in, let's see, one, two, three, fourth, where it talks about the motion, says Mr. Machado entertained a motion, I think it be, should be Mr. Machado made a motion. With that change, I'll move approval of the August fifteenth executive session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry, abstained.
So five in the affirmative and two abstentions. I'm looking for a motion to approve the joint open session minutes of August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Any discussion? Hearing none?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Unanimous. And finally, I'm looking for a motion to approve the open session minutes of August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Any discussion? Hearing none?
No move. That's the joint open session, right?
Nope.
No.
That's, I think we did the joint.
Yeah, we, of August twenty-first. Yeah, there was a joint open session and open session.
Oh, we already did.
So the joint meeting is one that I would, is the building inspection.
Right.
Robin, do you mean where we just did the? I thought we just did-
Open session. This is the joint open session.
The first one was the joint open session that we-
Yeah, oh, okay, okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the open session minutes of, uh, August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Salute.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any extensions?
I abstained.
So five in the affirmative, two abstentions. Uh, there are no i- topics, uh, not reasonably anticipated by the chair within forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Do any committee members have any action items for future meetings?
I'm not sure if it's an action item, but years ago, we used to get a high school calendar on a monthly basis. Is there, is there a high school calendar that's prepared, uh, that shows all of the high school activities for the month? We used to get that emailed, uh, to us, and now that we all have, uh, regional email addresses, I was wondering if if there is a high school calendar, if we could have that email to us monthly.
Uh, the only high school calendar I know that there is, I have access to a Google calendar that shows various high school events, and that that involves everything from even school classes. Uh, I do not receive a calendar from the high school showing the various events that take place. Mr. Sunderland, do you, are you aware?
I just go on the website. Yeah, I think it's from the website.
Yeah, key, all key events are listed along the, the top of the page, and then there are some items that are listed down below, uh, but that's, that's where I get my information, but I mean-
There's a pretty extensive calendar on the web page.
Yeah, now that everyone has a Chromebook, everything is digital, there are, we don't, not producing paper copies of schedules any longer.
I would like to write this in the next school committee meeting.
Joshua Rigo? Robin, can you extend an invitation to Joshua Rigo to join us at our next school committee meeting?
Sure, can you get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Tom, what do you hear?
Um, it's an article that was in the, oh, actually, Chris, you can.
In the, in the Taunton Gazette, Joshua Rigo, a Somerset Berkeley Regional High School senior, received the Dunning Fellow and Scholarship Excellence in Automotive Design Award at the College for Creative Studies. He designed this automobile. He received a forty-three-hundred-dollar scholarship, and he, he's a, uh-
Did he graduate already?
No, he's still here. So that's why I think it'd be great to invite him to the meeting, and the brain is a little odd that he designed, so that would be great, how good it's to run with.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing nothing? Uh, public input. Any public input this evening?
I just wanna mention one quick thing. First, um, I love that, um, all the announcements are now being emailed to the students, because they all have, I think it reduces, uh, class time, um, you know, taking items away from their class time, especially now that they don't have, um, homeroom, but, uh, I just want to, the superintendent assured me that every day, our s- high school does pledge to the flag, so any, any statements that we are not, no longer doing that, that is false, um, so I just feel, uh, the public should know that.
Thank you. Any other input? Hearing none. Um, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, specifically to discuss Somerset Teachers Association Level Three grievance hearing, and additionally pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the so, chair so declares, specifically to discuss pending litigation.
Salute.
Second. I have a motion and a second by roll call. Mrs. Gagliardi?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Giliducci?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
The chair also votes aye. Uh, the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee will not be returning to open session. At the conclusion of executive session. Thank you all for coming.